Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular council meeting for May twenty ninth? Eighth? Tomorrow will be the twenty ninth of the city council meeting. Just had our budget workshop, so if you were here, thanks for being here. And I'm calling our meeting to order, and let's do a flag salute. Did I miss that last time? No, I didn't. Okay, flags. Kelsey, why don't you lead us to the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could our clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
Thank you. Next up. So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live and recorded with closed captioning. It's cable cast on Metro Cable Channel fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It's also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, June second, at nine AM on Metro Cable fourteen, and it will also be available on the city's YouTube channel. Thank you. Next item, please. Next item is approval of agenda. Anybody want to change anything on our agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
Move seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next item, please. Next item is presentation number four. Presentation by Republic Services, their annual report and scholarship awards. Good evening, Anna.
Good evening. I believe someone's pulling it up for me, the presentation. Awesome, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Karpinski Costa and Vice Mayor Lopez Taft and council. I'm very excited to be kicking off this council meeting for everyone tonight. I'm Anna Rulon with Republic Services, and we have two presentations for you tonight. We have our annual update about everything that we did in 2024 and some 2025 stuff as well. And then we will be jumping into a more exciting presentation, which is our recognition of the 2025 Sustainability Scholarship winners. And we will take any questions about either presentation at the end of the second one. So in 2024, we provided your residents our normal services. We have our curbside trash and organics and our biweekly recycling service. We have our three neighborhood cleanup pickups. And we will have an update later tonight about some of the changes that we implemented for that program. And then, of course, we had some supplemental programs centered around different seasons, different holidays. And we mailed out our fan favorite thirteen-month calendar, which serves as our customer service guide. Some of our education highlights. We provided support for a plethora of events in 2024, whether it was monetary sponsorships, supporting with trash services, portable restrooms, or an educational booth. And we did a handful of events that are part of our contract that were required to do services or booths for. Some highlight events there would be our favorite Tools of the Trade or The Stars and the Stripes and Sunday Fun Day. But we also provided support for a variety of events above and beyond what our contractual requirements have us do. So some highlighted events there would be the Kiwanis Crab Feed, the Heart Spaghetti Feed, and some other events all around the city. And there are some fun pictures there that are all from 2024. Last year and this year, we've also been stepping up our game when it comes to volunteering in your city and trying to give back where we see fit. So a couple highlights here would be, last November, we supported the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry the week before Thanksgiving, helping hand out turkeys and a variety of other foods to food insecure families in Citrus Heights as well as outside of Citrus Heights, because that program there feeds a lot of people in Sacramento County and beyond. We also supported the Heart Winter Sanctuary by providing a warm meal one night. And Republic volunteers showed up and served that meal and visited with the sanctuary attendees. And then we also provided a grab-and-go bagged breakfast for them the following morning. We have partnered with the River City Waterway Alliance to start doing some community cleanups. We're currently focusing on Arcade Creek. We've already completed two of these, and we have another one later this Friday as well. And at those, we've been providing in-kind services, breakfast, lunch, and we've been volunteering as well. And then lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the big day of service. This was the first year that Citrus Heights participated with Orangeville and Fair Oaks. And we were very proud to be a major sponsor of the overall event. But even more so, we had about fifteen Republic folks show up at Carriage Drive Elementary, where we did a variety of landscaping projects, replaced some of the planter boxes, installed a peace pole. And then we provided in-kind services to five different projects throughout Citrus Heights, Fair Oaks, and Orangeville. Onto our outreach and education, which is a bulk of what my department does for public services in the city of Citrus Heights. Our absolute favorite is our calendar. And as you all recall, we presented the winning artistic students from Citrus Heights earlier this year. And that art was featured in the calendar that we did mail out to all 27,000 homes. And this calendar serves as the guide that tells residents what to put in each bin, tells them about all of the various programs we have, and supplies them with resources where they can get more information online or otherwise. Those students not only received their art in the calendar, but they also received a thirty-fourth scale replica Republic Services truck to take home, and they got to meet all of you. Other education outreach, I'm not going to go through all of these, but the main points is that we've tried to have a really comprehensive approach. And we could not do this without the partnership of your staff here at City Hall, specifically Mary Poole. And our comprehensive approach is that we try to have in-person outreach, print media, and social media outreach, because we believe that your residents, some of them only consume information through one of these means. And for those that consume information through all of these means, we think it's good for them to see repeated information so that it can really stick in. And a couple just updates on changes of how we're doing education outreach as time goes on. We have found that people are moving away from print bills, and they are moving to online bills. So our bill inserts aren't as effective as they used to be. So to combat this, we have been doing more direct mailers, which is, of course, more costly, but if we want to get print media, excuse me, print media in people's hands, we have to do direct mailers. And then, secondly, we have been doing more social media outreach. We believe it's the biggest bang for the buck, and we are able to target our social media outreach to specifically Citrus Heights zip codes. This is the boring part. It's not boring to me, but it's probably boring to you, and that is all of the tons that we collected in 2024. The main point of this is to understand that the only stuff that we purposely landfill is stuff put in the trash cart, stuff that we pick up through illegal dumping, and then contamination, AKA residuals, that we pull out of the other good waste streams. So some of the stuff that residents put in the recycling bin is actually trash. We pull that out, and it is landfilled. But everything else that we pick up here in the city is diverted away from a landfill. It's recycled, or it's properly, responsibly processed. A couple quick highlights that are unique to 2024 alone. So the first two are about recycling. We purchased a facility formerly known as Recycling Industries about a little over a year ago that is located in North Highlands, and all of our recycling is now going there. So all of the recyclables that we collect from Citrus Heights, residents formerly was going to a different Republic Services owned and operated facility a couple hours away from here, but now it is staying in Sacramento County, being processed here. And this is beneficial for two reasons, because we now have more insight into the recycling process, and we can actually see what does and doesn't happen at the facility, so we can educate your residents in a more informed way. And then, secondly, it reduces vehicle miles traveled, because now we're keeping that stuff here locally for the processing. And then our second recycling update is that 2024 marked the first year that all of your residential plastics one and two were sent to our Polymer Center in Las Vegas. And I've presented about this to you all before, but just a quick reminder. The Polymer Center, the point of it is to reduce the amount of plastics that are being downgraded when they're recycled and to increase circularity so that a plastic water bottle can become a plastic water bottle again, instead of being downgraded to something like carpet. So we're very proud of this facility, and we're very happy that all of your plastics are now going there. And then I've got two organics updates in 2024. So last year, we started pulling food waste out of your residential organics containers and sending it to our anaerobic digestion facility so it can be turned into electricity. Previously, that material was being composted alongside the green waste in that bin, but now there's a different story to be told. And then the last update for last year is that with help from city staff here and some community partners, we've expanded the residential compost program where we give out compost for free. And we did this by adding more sites where residents can go and pick up free compost. And we saw a 209% increase from 2023 to 2024. This program is very popular. And if anybody listening to me is interested in getting free compost, I highly recommend checking out one of these sites, because we've got a lot of it. All right, and then my last thing I would like to mention is that our diversion for 2024 was through the roof. Our contractual requirement is to hit a forty percent diversion away from landfills, and we had an all-time maximum of fifty point seven percent. So a full 10% higher than what we're required to do. And this just continues to go up. Over the past decade, it has gone up eleven point six percent. So we're excited about that, and we're hoping to continue working with your staff and doing more to educate the communities so that it can go up even higher. Okay, and I'll take questions at the end of the scholarship presentation. So at this point, I'm going to pass it over to our sustainability advisor for the city of Citrus Heights, my colleague Megan Smith Fajardo.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you, council, for having us. We are so excited. This is our favorite part of the presentation today. We're going to be announcing our scholarship winners for our 2025 Sustainability Scholarship. The scholarship is done in partnership with the city of Citrus Heights and the San Juan Education Foundation. And with that, I'm going to have Jonathan Weston here to begin a little bit about the education.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. So the San Juan Educational Foundation does two things for the community. First, it does direct-to-teacher grants, helping fund those areas where they can't get the funding to get those great inspirational projects done at the school districts. The second thing we do, and that's why I'm here tonight, is we help facilitate scholarships to great individuals, young individuals, who are coming up and show so much potential. And so I'm very thankful that the city of Citrus Heights and the Republic Services has the trust in our foundation to help facilitate these, and I'm really excited to hand these out tonight.
Thank you, Jonathan. So our Sustainability Scholarships are an annual scholarship that we give out. This year, we have two scholarship winners. They're winning a thousand-dollar scholarship each. They are graduating seniors from the San Juan Unified School District who are interested in pursuing an education that will lead to a career in sustainability or something that is beneficial to the environment. We had them do an essay contest where they talked about their career goals, and I'm excited to announce them today. And then, Mayor, if you could join us down at the front, we're going to have you shake hands with the winners.
Okay. I signed their little things.
You did, you did. So our first winner today is Mackenzie Dawson. Mackenzie, if you'd like to come on up.
Come on up, Mackenzie.
And then we're going to have you guys stand up for the photo, right you? Why, where the photo's happening?
And if any friends or family wants with the photo, feel free to come up here.
Do you want to get the rest of the council?
Oh, we'll do that at the end.
We're going to do one at the period.
You're doing her.
Shall they shake her hand?
Yes.
Go for it.
And then Mackenzie, if you wouldn't mind just standing off the side, and we'll do a good photo altogether. So Mackenzie is a graduating senior from Mesa Verde High School. She plans to attend Sierra Community College. Her long-term goal is to get a degree in science. She's hoping to become a traveling veterinarian. During her time as a student at Mesa Verde, she organized a blood drive donation with Valiant. She served as the finance director of her link crew, and she volunteered in the environmental club. Congratulations, Mackenzie. Next up, we have Tristan Scott. Tristan, if you'd like to join us. And then same thing, if you guys want to stand over here, we'll do a picture all at the end. So Tristan is also a graduating senior from Del Campo High School. They are hoping to get a degree in marine science and want to study the migration routes of great white sharks, which I hear is very complicated, and work as a marine biologist. When they get tired of that, they hope to then later pursue a career in teaching. And obviously, given these goals, Tristan is very excited about nature and the ocean and pursuing sustainability. So with that, we'll give a round of applause to our scholarship winners. And city council, if you could join us for the final photo.
And I'm only up here in case anyone has questions for our annual update or the scholarship presentation. And then if not, we're all finished. Great.
Questions? Questions? Go for it.
Very impressive presentation on the new facility you guys have purchased. Do you guys offer tours?
Absolutely.
For education purpose?
We would love to host you for a tour. We actually were just there today, giving a tour to some of the Elk Grove city staff in the recycling and waste department. So yes.
So I'd certainly like to invite the neighborhood associations to recruit for tours.
Yeah, that would be very fun.
Maybe we could get a bus and get everybody on a bus and go one time.
Sounds fun to me, as long as you guys can handle the smell.
That's a good idea.
We know where we're going, so.
I have a question. Your partnership with Splash? When I talked to Mackenzie, she was having a hard time getting into the San Juan schools.
Yeah.
Is still the case?
So we've struggled with getting in San Juan schools ever since COVID. I will tell you that Mackenzie and Splash has been more successful than my team has been at getting in the schools. I think they're up to seventeen? Is that right? Presentation? Nineteen. Nineteen presentations. Granted, they started after the school year started, so nineteen is better than zero. But yeah, we definitely have some work to do. And we would love any support that anyone has.
And then my final question is, and I'm trying to multitask. My final question is, we had asked some time ago about holding a special hazardous waste locally so that people don't have to drive four fluorescent bulbs down to Northern Prairie Station. Is that in the works of planning?
We have been working with Mary Poole on that and on getting quotes. So we haven't talked about it super recently, so I don't have much of an update, but we are looking into it, and we've got some numbers.
I gotta believe there's a grant out there that would help pay for it, you know, for the extra help that you have and the extra precautions for hazardous material.
Yeah, potentially.
So it's just nice, a lot of residents have asked us to have one local.
Right. Yeah, the gentleman that I had a meeting with about it is the same guy who actually used to run the events back when we had them at Sunrise Mall, and he now works for Republic Services Hazardous Waste Environmental Services, part of our company. So he was able to give me a quote based on the numbers back when we had those events.
Great. That's terrific. Any other questions?
Just a comment that I appreciate all that your team does to help keep our city clean and beautiful. And I know you and your team have offered me a tour separate from this conversation. I would love to have one.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have three different facilities that you could take a tour of, Kelsey. So you can make a whole day out of it. And we're very grateful to be in the city of Citrus Heights, and we absolutely could not do it without city staff, Mary Poole, and then also our other partners, like the Chamber of Commerce. You guys have a great city full of really vibrant organizations that make it easy to make us look good.
Okay.
Great.
Any questions for Anna? Great job, Anna.
Thank you.
And congratulations to those students. That's incredible.
Next item is number five. Annual presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Oh, hi, Luz.
Hello. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me. What a great segue into, after this great presentation, I would actually really like to hook up and maybe see how we can collaborate. I think that we have a very similar outreach program, and maybe we can find a way to...
But you get into all the schools. They let you in all the schools.
Yeah, exactly. So maybe we can find a way to partner it. We're going to talk about mosquitoes, so from the great services that they offer to the services that the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District offers as well. So this is my annual update to the council with all about mosquitoes. And it's so hot this week that mosquitoes are definitely out and about already. So I hope that by the end of the presentation, you'll get a little, leave with some tips on how to stay safer from mosquitoes now that the season is starting. And I do want to acknowledge Mayor Dr. Dana Karpinski Costa as our board member on our board, who's always very supportive and always a pleasure to work with and just, you know, always there in my corner, supporting all of my outreach efforts. So thank you. All right, so let that all get started. So as you know, we are the local mosquito vector control district. We're the agency that is charged with protecting residents against mosquitoes and mosquito transmitted diseases. I know those pictures kind of give people the heebie-jeebies, you know, because mosquitoes can be definitely more than a nuisance. And, you know, I think that's the main message. Mosquitoes are a threat, and we're the local agency here charged with protecting residents. So we operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and it's our mission to make sure that we're keeping residents safe from the mosquitoes and the diseases that they can transmit West Nile virus and especially now up and coming dengue fever and other exotic diseases. All right, so as I said, mosquito season is here. We had some late spring rains. Now we have some super hot temperatures. So all of that, that combination creates the ideal mosquito breeding conditions, and especially if there are a variety of different sources in people's homes. West Nile virus continues to be a threat in our area. Each year, the mosquito season seems to get longer and longer. When I first joined the district back in 2007, after Labor Day, I was like, okay, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. But now, come November, we're still seeing mosquitoes, and that's because every year, it gets hotter and hotter, and it gets hotter into later in the year. So the mosquito season is definitely getting longer. And as I said, concern for dengue is growing as we get more infections reported in California each year. So as you know, mosquitoes come from different mosquito habitats. In our area, we have about twenty-seven different mosquito species that are active at different times of the year. I know that to most people, a mosquito is a mosquito. All you want to do is smack it before it bites you. But it's important to note that mosquitoes, depending on the species, can come from different sources. So we have our ag-related mosquitoes, and then, of course, we have the ones that come from those small backyard sources. So, you know, that plant saucer, that bird bath, a dog dish, anything that can hold water for more than a few days can and will become a mosquito breeding source. So it's important that, again, we always do our part to make sure that we're draining all that stagnant water, because that's going to go a long way in reducing those mosquito sources. So how do we control mosquitoes at the district? We have what we call an integrated mosquito management approach that includes a lot of different elements. Primarily, so we start off with public information and education. I'm the communications manager for the district. Here in Citrus Heights, every year, we participate in Sunday Fun Day. Sometimes we do National Night Out activities. We always have repellent available for your Fourth of July parade, and a lot of those efforts is, you know, thanks to Dr. Jana. We also have our laboratory. So they are in charge of tracking and monitoring West Nile virus activity. They're the ones that set mosquito traps. They collect the mosquitoes. They bring them back to the lab. They count and sort each mosquito. They separate the males from the females, and they test the females to see if they would be infected with West Nile virus. If they are, then that's how we know where and how West Nile virus is developing and where we would need to respond with our control efforts or essentially our spraying. Ninety percent of the work that we do is actually treating mosquitoes in water. It's what we prefer to do. It's the easiest thing to do, which is why we're always telling people to dump out that stagnant water. But obviously, if there's a lot of West Nile virus activity in any given area and we need to suppress mosquito populations quickly, then one of the ways of doing that is through our control operations, essentially our spraying. We also have our biological control method, so the use of mosquito fish, which is very popular. People that have a pond at home, fountains, horse troughs, we put them in rice fields. Anything that holds water is a good home for these mosquito fish, because, you know, they help us control mosquitoes naturally. Each one can eat between two to three hundred larvae per day. So they're very effective at controlling mosquitoes. And then, of course, our ecological management department, we work with landowners, you know, to help treat mosquito breeding sources on their property. So all of these elements combined make for our integrated mosquito management approach. So in terms of West Nile virus activity, West Nile virus is still the most prevalent mosquito transmitted disease in California and in the United States. Last year, we had a fairly likely year, especially if you compare it to 2023. We had a hundred and twenty-nine human cases of West Nile virus, and this is for the state. But for every case that actually gets reported, the CDC estimates that there's thirty to seventy cases that go unreported. So that number is potentially a lot higher. In terms of West Nile virus activity for Citrus Heights, we did have seven mosquito samples and five dead birds that tested positive. You can see that map of where the activity was concentrated. And, you know, it's definitely lower than, you know, a few other years, which is actually, you know, a good, a good thing. West Nile virus activity can change from year to year, and as I said, 2024 was definitely a much lighter year compared to 23. All right. Also, detections of invasive mosquitoes. So this is what we call our newest threat. So invasive mosquitoes are aggressive day-biting mosquitoes. These are two different species of mosquitoes, different than the ones that can transmit West Nile virus. These were found for the very first time in 2019, actually here in the city of Citrus Heights for the very first time. And then ever since, they've spread very rapidly to many other areas within Sacramento County. These mosquitoes, we, they're a threat for dengue fever. And even though we did have light detections of invasive mosquitoes within Citrus Heights, you can see, you know, we do have activity surrounding the city, and there's other areas within Sacramento County that have heavy infestations, especially the, the area of Rosemont and then South Natomas, other areas within Sacramento County. But the biggest threat is that last year in California, there was six hundred and forty-seven travel-related dengue cases and actually eighteen locally acquired cases. So basically, that means that with this mosquito present in our community, let's say I travel somewhere, I get infected, I come back with dengue symptoms, and then one of these mosquitoes bites me, it gets infected, and then it can bite somebody that hasn't traveled. So that's actually happening more and more. For the first time ever in 2023, we had three cases of dengue fever, all in Southern California. We have not had any in Northern California. But by last year, that number grew to eighteen cases. So definitely a concern. It's still too early to tell what kind of season it's going to be this year, because these mosquitoes are actually a little bit more active in the fall. But these are, as I said, aggressive day-biting mosquitoes that can breed in just a teaspoon of water. So some of those sources that you see up there, plant axos, small, small sources in backyards is where these mosquitoes are growing. So, you know, we've had them since 2019, and they've been spreading rapidly, and we actually need some new control strategies. So, we're actually considering the use of something called sterile insect technique. So it's a environmentally friendly way to control these mosquitoes. It's been used by other areas. Southern California, they're already doing some of these techniques. So essentially, it's, it's a strategy that's been approved for use in mosquito control. And basically, the, the one that we're considering is the one where we would be releasing sterile males. So these are sterile males that have a bacteria, natural occurring bacteria called Wolbachia. We would release these males, and then once they mate with the wild females in the area, then those eggs that the female lays would not hatch. So eventually, the mosquito populations decline. These are not genetically modified mosquitoes. That has not been approved for use in California. So the, the one method is the one with using Wolbachia, which is the natural occurring bacteria that's already present in many insects, but not in these invasive Aedes mosquitoes. So again, moving forward, we're considering the use of these, of these new technologies in conjunction with some of the other tools that we already have. We will continue with our surveillance and control efforts, doing outreach opportunities and informing the public about these new control methods, and, you know, basically reporting, encouraging the public to report those day-biting mosquitoes. You know, we want to make sure that people are not sharing plants, that they're scrubbing down their containers, and that they're doing their part in helping us. Mosquito control is a collaborative effort. We can't do it alone, so we depend on people doing their part in helping us control mosquitoes and keeping our community safe. So with that, I'm, I'm done, unless you guys have any questions for me?
Anybody have questions for Luz? Make a comment.
Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always enjoyable.
Thank you.
Hey Luz, I always like to take the opportunity to mention our work with the bees, the yellow jackets.
Yes. Exactly, yes. That's one of our services that we don't often mention. It kind of goes overlooked. We do work with yellow jackets, so if somebody's having a yellow jacket nest, that would be the underground nest. That is something that we can come out and remove. We also do a lot of work with ticks as well, so ticks can transmit Lyme disease. Our lab collects ticks and also tests them for Lyme. May is actually, May, May is Lyme Awareness Month. So we're, we're at the end of the season now, but we do also do work with ticks.
Luz is a one-man department, so we kind of take her very seriously. Also, I will be at the board meeting in June, and if I could pick up a couple boxes, we're having our Stars and Stripes event at the end of June.
Perfect.
And if I could pick up a bunch of boxes of repellent, like we had last year, so we can give to the city, make available to the attendees of our event?
Perfect, yes. Happy to do that.
If you have a whole bunch of those, I'll grab them.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll see, that was in June.
Yes, thank you.
A great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luz.
Next item, please. Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself or to my colleague to my right. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And Mayor, this evening, I have one speaker card for the general public comment section, and then I have six for item fourteen under public hearings.
Okay, well, let's just start and see where we go with the time. So let's just keep our five-minute limit for now?
Okay.
Okay.
So the first speaker I'll call up is Daryl Mott.
Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me a little bit of opportunity for some time this evening. I was here last August with a bunch of my neighbors. We were having some issues on Hoops Drive, and it's been very frustrating, and I've had some life issues, which just added to all the frustration that kind of combined. But I'm not here to be negative today. I'm here to come and say, since that time, the impact team, which is a lot of officers here, have made an impact, and the neighborhood is night-and-day difference. For the past few weeks, I've walked around. Every time I'm walking my dog, I do it two or three times a day. People come up and they tell me how nice it is. There's not issues, people walking around, things that are, you know, maybe crime and other issues. And so I just wanted to say thank you. We addressed the issue. I would also like to provide maybe a suggestion, and I'm hoping that perhaps the council and the police can maybe look into this and ask themselves why this went on for so long. These houses were in the neighborhood for quite some time, and I'm just wondering if there's any postmortem that we could do that would help us alleviate, strengthen the laws, do something, because the impact around the people around that, while it seems small, can impact a lot of issues in a person's life, which kind of leads me to my second, you know, recommendation. A lot of the issues and my items were deemed, I guess, non, I can't remember what else, but lower-level crimes. And so things like flooding and noise and trash and other things. And I found it really hard to get any kind of traction or any kind of assistance or reports in some cases on these issues. And it's the little things that turn into the big things, because now these little issues have caused me to take things. I understand that we don't have the resources. These are civil issues. But now I have to take the time on what things that used to be code enforcement laws to do a civil action, serve papers, go to court, prove my case. And the first thing, any insurance company or court asks you is, do you have any police reports? And so I said, well, I turned them in, but, you know, when I go onto the city website on the internet, there's only four selections, and it doesn't include trash or noise or anything else. So it's kind of hard to get those in. So I would ask if there's any way to try and do the little things. Perfect example is I drive up Sunrise to go to Twenty-four Hour Fitness every day, and they've had the speed limit cops on there for like the last couple of months. And it used to be a white-knuckle ride with people doing eighty miles an hour down the center of the vine. Those little things, while a nuisance, make a big difference, because now it's a nice commute drive. But anyways, thank you for your time. I just want to be a little positive and say thank you. The neighborhood is night-and-day difference.
You're looking good, Daryl.
Thank you, thank you. A little tired. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak for some not on the agenda? That's it?
That's all the speaker cards I have for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, let's move on.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
I'll start with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I missed a few things because I was sick. I got sick immediately after we came back from cap to cap, unfortunately.
You're not the only one. I met so many county people that are also ill from that, after that trip, so.
I hope they're doing well. I, I am on the mend, and I'd venture to say I'm somewhere in the ninety-seven percent range. This week, though, I was back in action, and I was able to attend the Memorial Day events on Monday at the Calvary Cemetery. I attended the mass for a few minutes before I headed over to the Sylvan Cemetery event put on by the American Legion Number Six Thirty-Seven. That was very moving. That was my first time at the event, and I just really appreciate the Legion for putting it on, and of course, all who've served and all that we've lost in our military. Then today, I was invited by the Sacramento Chamber to attend the event put on by Visit Sacramento called the State of Tourism in Sacramento. And that was a really uplifting event. They talked about all of the cool things coming to the Sacramento region, including the Sacramento As and Iron Man, and then also a, an international food event called Terra Madre. That is super exciting. That's gonna be happening at the end of September at the Convention Center downtown. That is actually the Western Hemisphere version of this event that started in Italy. And so they see over three hundred thousand attendees, and Sacramento is the location indefinitely for this event for the Western Hemisphere. So it's very, very cool.
Maybe you could send us some information about it, to put it on our calendars.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
That's it? Councilmember Schaefer, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I had, from a council standpoint, I've had a little bit of a light schedule, but been very busy business-wise. So on the twenty-third, we had a finance committee meeting with the, and we just reviewed what we just went over with the, with the budget workshop. Very good. Really good news in that. It feels like we are really on a good fiscal track with the city. And then I also attended the, you know, this was just the Sylvan Cemetery, which I've done that many times before. It is a truly moving experience. I got there a little early, and I kind of walked around, and I just didn't realize how many people I knew who were buried there. I just, I guess, you know, just once in a while, you need to go and reflect and kind of wander through and realize that, hey, there's, there's lots of folks that have passed that I miss deeply, and they're, they're buried there. So that's really, oh, and this morning, I had the re-grand opening of, of the...
Donuts.
Yeah, Master Donuts. It was great. There was lots of people there, lots of, very busy place, and it's fantastic.
Lot of donuts?
Lot of donuts. I actually bought a whole dozen of donuts and took it to my wife's work, who works just around the corner over here, and treated her staff to, to a bunch of donuts here. So, because I just wanted to make sure that we're patronizing these, these restaurants and these new businesses that are opening up. So I made a contribution there. So one thing I just want to kind of remind you that it's gonna be really hot the next few days. Friday and Saturday, it's gonna be a hundred on Friday and a hundred and two, and this is a really good time when I think about it being so hot. I think about ice cream, and I think about getting out of the hot weather and going to Leatherbees, or going to our new Handel's Ice Cream Restaurant. So I certainly would encourage everyone to, to get out there, and, and yes, it's gonna be hot. It's gonna drop right back down into the high eighties on Sunday, but we're gonna have two days of pretty substantial heat, and I'm sure we're not all quite used to that yet. So anyhow, stay cool out there, go have some ice cream, and enjoy.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, how'd you do?
All right. I had a few things on my calendar. We, I met with Kathy Lynn Carpenter, who is the Executive Director of Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid. I like to meet with them quarterly, just to get an update of what's going on, what efforts I can support or, or think about that's happening with our business community. That same day, I did my budget review with the team, and that's always good, because you, it's nice to get information to not only think about, but to give your feedback personally on. Seventeenth was big day of service. That was really a lot of fun. And it was really fun to be part of another extended community activity. I think that was really a good idea for us to get involved with something that is such a well-known activity and to include our community, who are already big servers in our community. So that was nice to join forces. On the twentieth, I had my neighborhood area meeting, and that was featuring our own Chief Turcot. So that was really nice to hear a police report from his perspective. And I'm always available to give a report at my own neighborhood area, and so if you live in my area, please attend, because we have very, very informative and active neighborhood area group, and we would love to have you. We always have good door prizes at the end, too. On the twenty-first, I, I had the pleasure of receiving an award through my workplace, but I went to the San Juan Unified School District's Most Valued Partner event, and I saw Amy Van there accept an award for our city, and, and other city community members also receiving awards. So, good going, Citrus Heights. I really love attending events on behalf of my day job and seeing the city getting recognized in various ways, so I just wanted to point that out especially. You never know who you're gonna see around town. On the, yes, very good, very well done. And I did attend our library board meeting on the twenty-second. It is budget time, and so they too have their budget approval. And so we are, we published our twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and as I have for a few, a few cycles here, a few years, attended on Monday the Memorial Day Service at Sylvan. Again, what a touching ceremony, and informative, too. And I was really compelled to reflect and think, how many of our students and young families can be included? And so I am working personally on an initiative to make sure they are on the invitation list, because I think a community can only be stronger when you understand how your freedoms were earned, how they were fought for on your behalf, and we get to enjoy them every day. And I think a young person needs to know that earlier than being a grown adult talking about these things. So that was a great end to my activity so far. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so I have been very busy as well since our last council meeting. I went to the big day of service on the seventeenth, and thanks to Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, I didn't freeze to death. She got me a T-shirt. We stood in the wind. We gave a little short presentation, and we were happy to see the number of Citrus Heights people that were there volunteering. It was very heartfelt. On the nineteenth, I did Monday with the mayor. No one came. It's like throwing a party with nobody there. So it is nice that I'm there for three hours if you have issues. I know Mr. Mott used to come and talk to me, and so other people, if you have issues, you know, you get almost serviced right on the spot, because why we can't deal with you at the microphone, we sure can at City Hall. So I encourage you, before I give it up, but I think so far, I want to try to keep it going. Hopefully, somebody will come. David always comes and brings me some cashew nuts, and that's nice. On the twentieth, I went to the mosquito meeting, and you heard probably a lot about mosquitoes, but there were a couple of things that I just wanted to point out at our meeting that you might not know. For instance, did you know that cemetery vases in cemeteries are a source of mosquito production? And there are two hundred and forty-seven thousand cemetery vases in our district, which is Sacramento and Yolo, in thirty-seven cemeteries. So they're finding now that if the vase is coated in zinc, that it might deter larvae production. So they're doing a study on that. Another study we're doing involves, you know, they, they sell these plants that repel mosquitoes. Please buy this plant, put it in your yard. And so we're trying to see, we have a little thing going at the district, whether lavender and lemongrass actually do anything to repel mosquitoes. So that's another little update we'll have by the end of the summer, I'm sure. And then we have up, this year, we have forty-five thousand acres of rice. They are the biggest source of mosquitoes, especially in the side of, you know, in Natomas and stuff. And I told you about the yellow jackets. And if you have dead birds, this is, the dead bird hotline is done, open, I mean. So if you go on the website, www.fuckthebite.net, you'll find a link to how to report a dead bird and what to do. bird and what to do with it. So if you see that, we're still doing that. So that was my little update on mosquitoes. Then I left mosquito and went to the chamber lunch because my husband gave a little speech on San Juan Water District, so that was nice. But the presenter was the fire department who talked about a program they have where they put in their first responders, I would say nurse practitioners or physicians assistants who can actually administer stuff that instead of going to the hospital and waiting hours and hours and hours, that they can actually do right there on the spot. So I kind of, that program has got a lot of potential and we'll see where it goes, but it really does provide incredible service to the community. But then the best part of the day, after all that was, same day, went to the ribbon cutting at Caravan Uzbek Cuisine. The city manager and I were there and they moved from where they were on Sunrise and Antelope over to Sylvan Corners, right next to Humley's Beer. And the food is delicious. I mean, it is so incredible. I wish my stomach had been bigger, then I could have tried more things, but it's just, it was good stuff. And it's really a nice location. It's nice inside. It adds something to our eventual development of Sylvan Corners, which I think is going to be great. So if you're looking for a place to dine, Caravan is a great place to try. And then on the 23rd, I did the finance committee with, with Tim. And then on the 26th, what did I do? Oh, I went to the Sylvan Cemetery. I did give a little couple-minute address to the crowd and it's always, you know, I just always amazed at the various speeches. The chief gave, chief is really good at giving speeches without notes and, you know, I had notes. And I just loved Montiten's presentation on how Memorial Day got to be, that bodies that were from world, from the Civil War, that were laying in the field for four years. And they finally, after the war was over, decided to go back and pick up, you know, the bodies and tried to identify just about 50% of them. They could, they didn't have DNA. They didn't have dog tags. So it was very hard to identify the dead in those days. So they buried them and then says, let's put flowers on their, on their graves. And so they called it Decoration Day and then it became Memorial Day. So I thought that was a great story and how many MIA's that we have, which also included in Memorial celebration. So I thought that was pretty good. Then I went to the SOAR meeting that night because we did have our Area 10 meeting and we had, our speaker was the Citrus Heights Historical Society. He did a redo of the Bombs Away, relive of the Roseville bombing, well, Citrus Heights bombing, because actually it was the homes in Citrus Heights that got affected. And then the, they are going to have a tour of the cemetery for, open to the public to join their tour and I believe it's coming up at the end of July. So that's their next community event. So I think that's going to be cool. And then on the 27th, besides my little sewer briefing, I meet with the general manager to go over the bud, the agenda. I had, I was happy with Councilmember Middleton, who is, by the way, on a family emergency tonight, so she's not here, but she and I attended with staff and Ash. We met a guy from that old Sunrise mall. So we talked, you know, I did one of these shame on you's for what the mall looks like and cleaned it up. He did go take a tour. I hope he saw it at its worst and then saw how nice and clean everything else was except for his property. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's work in progress, so we don't have anything to report on it because nothing's ever sure until it's written down. So anyways, we'll look forward to any developments, but we are moving forward, trying our best to do something about it. I know everybody's anxious, but at least we can get it cleaned up. It's a minimum. We can get it cleaned up. And then this morning, I did have a sewer meeting and again, it was just budget items and that's about it for me. Next item.
Next item, we have consent calendar. Item six is the approval of minutes. Item seven is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Short Term Rental Business License section. Number eight, we have the AB 481 Annual Renewal of Military Equipment Policy for the Police Department and Review of Annual Report. Item nine, the 2024 Bridge Maintenance Project Final Acceptance and Notice of Completion. Item 10, the 2025 Accessibility and Drainage Project Award of Construction Contract. Item 11, the San Juan Avenue Complete Streets Phase 1A Project Final Acceptance and Notice of Completion. Item 12, the Award of Housing Repair Loan Program and Administration Contract to Michael Baker International.
Does anyone have, does anybody want to pull any of these items for discussion, questions, separate vote?
I just have a question since I missed the last meeting. Should I not vote to approve the minutes?
You're still allowed to vote to approve them, but if you feel like you don't feel comfortable because you weren't present, you're welcome to abstain from that.
Okay.
We can abstain you from the minutes one if you want.
I did watch the meeting.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then you can vote.
Okay.
Move approval.
Okay. Second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 13. The subject is zoning code and specific plan amendments. There are three motions for your council consideration. First is move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, introduce for a first reading and waive the full reading of ordinance, amending various sections of Chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code regarding zoning and adopt a resolution repealing and replacing Appendix B of the Stock Ranch Guide for Development and amending Figure 3.4 of the Boulevard Plan.
The speakers that you have, are they for any, are they for item 14? What item are they for?
Yes, the speaker cards I have are for item 14.
So none for 13. Okay, so let's do a staff report.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudez here before you, representing the Planning Division in this item. As described in the description on the agenda, we're updating three separate planning documents tonight. The zoning code, the Boulevard Plan and the Stock Ranch. And really, the key, the aim is tonight is to amend these documents, really to expand the allowable uses in our city, to streamline the permitting process and to really align the documents within each other and update terminology and definitions with current times. The reason for this really is to advance the Economic Development Work Plan that you adopted earlier this year. This was a goal within that plan is to evaluate these documents. And so we have done that. We've reviewed them. We've provided them to the public for review. We covered them with the Planning Commission and everything went good and no comments have been received. We're really excited to have these documents updated. Really, these, these changes will align our zoning with current trends, hopefully advance new businesses to come in the community and really streamline the permitting process. I won't go over the changes in detail, but they were covered in your packet. So if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I have provided you the motions.
Any specific questions? I have one. Okay, on the Auburn Boulevard specific plan, currently we don't allow certain automotive uses, right? Does this increase that? I kind of read something about storing automobiles and it reminded me of the house on Old Auburn Road, you know, storing automobile.
That has not changed the automotive uses. They are still somewhat restricted on Auburn Boulevard. We did add a couple new classifications that were in the zoning code that were absent in the Auburn Boulevard Plan, like auto sales that might install a portion of the parts, but most of those...
Part sales, not auto sales.
Correct. Auto, part sales, not auto sales. That still is not allowed on the Boulevard Plan.
So we still don't allow auto sales?
Correct. Yep.
Integrity, integrity. Okay, so motion if no one has any questions?
I move, we want to do these separately, one at a time. We're going to do all three of them, though.
I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, so I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did not know that was a public hearing. Open the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this item. Hearing done? We close the public hearing now. We can have a motion.
I move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15061B3 of the guidelines and, we take one motion at a time? Or, okay, so that's the first motion.
A second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 I move to introduce the first reading read by title and waive the full reading of ordinance number 2025 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, amending various sections of Chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section.
Second?
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I move to adopt Resolution 2025, a resolution for the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, repealing and replacing Appendix B of the Stock Ranch Guide for Development and amending Figure 3.4 of the Boulevard Plan.
Second?
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's it for that item?
The next item is public hearing, item number 14. The subject is Rangoon Grocery, 7601 Sunrise Boulevard, request for a letter of public convenience and necessity. And staff recommends that City Council review the application for public convenience and necessity and make one of the following motions that is presented on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor. Casey Kempner, your Community Development Director alongside Associate Planner Stephanie Louie tonight. Occasionally, council hears these letters of public convenience and necessity, which is a requirement of ABC to determine, that allows the council to determine if the need for additional liquor license is serving a public convenience and necessity. So the council has a lot of latitude determining whether or not the proposed license will serve a community need or not. It's not like your typical entitlement where you have to make direct findings related to approving or denying that. You have a lot of latitude. But really encourage you to focus. You may hear a lot of ancillary opinions and approaches and thoughts, but really focus on whether or not the use is bringing a convenience to the community rather than some of the externalities that may be brought forth.
So yes, like Casey mentioned, my name is Stephanie Louie, an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight, we're refocusing on the Rangoon Grocery located at 7601 Sunrise Boulevard in their Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity for a Type 21 alcohol license. So Casey kind of went into detail and then just as a reminder, the ABC only issues a license if it's approved by a local jurisdiction. So in this case, City Council is that determining body. If you recall back in August of last year, you approved the new Amazon grocery store and then December, we had the PCN for Burmese and Moore, which was denied. So for this project, the PCN request is for Rangoon Grocery, which is located in the Citrus Heights Plaza. It's been operating since 2023 without issue. Rangoon specializes in Burmese and Asian grocery items. They are requesting a Type 21 Off Sale General ABC License, which is issued to retail stores and authorizes the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits. If approved, Rangoon hopes to add to their existing inventory of Burmese and Asian items with a focus on specialty alcoholic beverages of these cultures. And so their hours of operation are going to be daily from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They'll follow ABC standards, which will be ID for ID verification. And the store can accommodate a designated area for beer and wine display away from the entry and liquor will be stored behind the counter. And so for the application review, a PCN is required by ABC for this project due to an over-concentration of alcoholic licenses within the location census tract, which is 8142. The census tract currently allows for two off-sale licenses and four are currently existing, which we'll go into more detail on the next slide. We did receive one comment from the public, which was provided in the staff report. A security plan and floor plan were provided by the applicant, which was reviewed by staff. PD also reviewed this proposal and had no opposition for the issuance of the license. And so for this slide, it does show a map of the existing general off-sale retail ABC licenses within census tract 8142, as well as a thousand-foot radius around the project address. The red point shows the location of Rangoon Grocery, which is located at the corner of Sunrise and Old Auburn. It is good to note that when ABC determines if a census tract is over-concentrated, it is only for the census tract that the proposed location is in. So in this case, 8142. ABC also accounts for all off-sale licenses when they review for over-concentration, not just for the license type that's being applied for. So for this proposal, the applicant is requesting a Type 21 license, which is for the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits. The only Type 21 licenses within the current census tract is Auburn Gas and Food and then Mariposa Market. The two remaining licenses are Type 20, which is for the off-sale of beer and wine and does not include distilled spirits. So if you can see within the thousand-foot radius, Rangoon Grocery has two other Type 20 licenses. It would be the only Type 21 license that would sell beer, wine and spirits within a thousand-foot radius of the location. So here are the recommended motions. Council either move to approve the PCN or move to deny the PCN. The applicant, as well as representative for the applicant, are here and can speak on behalf of the project, as well as city staff in case you have any further questions.
Anyone have questions? Any questions? Questions, okay. Does the applicant come after I open the public hearing or before?
It's really your discretion, but usually after you open it.
Okay. I'm opening the public hearing. Let's hear from the applicant. And then our, and then our public comments. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and all of the councilmembers. Yeah, I'm the owner of Rangoon Grocery Store. Yeah, we started this convenience, small grocery store in this current address on the 2023. So we specialize in the Asian snack and drink, especially for the Burmese and a lot of Asian small foods in there. Yeah, so now we're trying to, most of our customers are recommend to be have the some Asian brand wines, beers and spirits. So that's, that's why we're trying to expand our business to be careful of the off-sale license in this small convenience store, at my store. Yeah, so now we are seeking for this PCN approval because we also have the another, we have also experience about for this liquor store in the full-tenant city, Orange County. So we have the, we believe that we can be controlled, manage about for the this legal operation, not violating any rules and regulation and ABC rules and regulations. So that is why we now we're trying to be expand our current existing location, yeah.
You guys speak?
Yeah, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Jessica Harris and I am his representative and agent, that's helping him also with the ABC application process. So if you guys have any questions regarding that process?
She can help with that.
Yes, I have a question. So the intention is to have specific regional beers, wines, spirits. Are you going to have any just general beers, wines and spirits that are not regional specific?
Yeah, our, our expansion for the this liquor, beer, wine, where we specialize on the, this Asian, a lot of, where we focus on the this Asian product, yeah. Maybe just a few kinds of generally beers and wine maybe involved, but we will not be, a lot of, a lot of inventory will not be made for the this, this kind of the things. Because our mainly focus is the, all of the Asian product grocery and convenience item in there. So that's why we, we made the consideration about for the this expansion or not, but finally, we made the decision to be expand for the this, this kind of the, based on our, our client, sorry, customer requirement. So, yeah. So our, our difference to is... sorry, customer requirement. So yeah, so our, our difference to is running with a lot of January, January, we know brand for the liquor. But here is since our store is focused on the Asian product. So currently, right now, also, a lot of, 90% of things are come from, especially like Asian product here, not, not for the January, we know product and brand. Yeah.
I do have a list. He did provide a list of proposed alcohol beverages to include in his store, which are include but not limited to very variety of sake, Vietnamese rice wines, draft beers, Japanese beers, and whiskeys, Korean soju, Thailand singai, I believe. I'm not pronouncing it right. And Chang beer and Chinese Baijiu.
I think that's in our staff report.
Yeah. One more question. So, and I, and I think this question came up before. When you get a license for, for your store, let's say you go, you grow like gangbusters and then you sell your store. Does that license stay with the location? And if they continue as a, as a grocery store that sells liquor, and this might be for Casey and team Stephanie, does that license, for lack of a better term that I have, grandfather to the next owner, and they can change their liquor preferences, if you will?
Allison knows everything.
The new owners would have to be vetted by ABC as well. It's not just a given. So there is a process, but it would not necessarily come to us as part of that process.
Okay.
They do have to apply, again with the department, like this applicant did, and do the whole process. More likely, they probably will have to come and get a PCN as well.
Okay, thank you.
And he's been at the location how long?
For two years.
Two years without selling any spirits, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Then let's hear from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and call the speakers up at this time. So the first one, and I apologize if I mispronounce her name, is it Sarjit Kalan?
My name is Sarjit. So I'm here, you know, have a
Get closer to the microphone. There you go.
I'm here this way, you know, have too many, have Citrus Heights Sunrise and the new liquor store opening. So, so we have business, we have slow. So, so that's why, sorry, my English not very good. So I'm trying. So that's why I come here. So I think so next person better for me. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Gurpreet Singh.
Hi, my name is Gurpreet, and I'm the owner of Easy Mart Liquor of Sunrise and Antelope Intersection. I would like to oppose due to there's too many liquor licenses around the area already. And we do sell all premise liquor, and beer, and wine. So the reason I'm opposing is we already low on sales, and that's just going to cut into my business. I'm close to the location. They're asking a liquor license there. So I would like to oppose it. Thank you.
Next, Karimjit Minhas.
Hello, city member. My name is Karimjit Minhas. I'm in Citrus Heights for the last 16 years. And I'm opposing this liquor license because particularly that area, just every time I drove by, there are so many homeless issues, especially right behind the shopping center, or even front of the shopping center. Every time we go to the safe mart bank there, we always have it, every corner, there homeless sitting on the, on the left side, and the right side, and even behind it. So we already have so much homeless issue. Every time we have a meeting with Area 7, 8, 9, we always discuss that with the city police also. So that's the reason I'm opposing that. Thank you.
Next is Baljinder Singh.
Hello, everyone. City Council member. I'm here 27 years in Selmon Corner. I have liquor store. I have business there. So we have already too many liquor licenses already. We went through like a month ago, too. So we have a lot of homeless problem, too. So we have a good relationship, everybody. We don't have any problem there. But we are no one anymore licensed in Citrus Heights. Please make denied, because other issue coming too, like next month, maybe. We have other liquor license coming too. We have too many problem already. So I'm doing business. So we are really slow. It's okay. But if it's more liquor license, more problem. Thank you for give us time.
Next is Demetrius Lambros Sarnas Jr.
Hello, senior council. I'm a bypasser that bypasses the Chevron and, you know, goes across the street, goes eat whatever. And I see a bunch, as they've mentioned, a bunch of homelessness that's going on. And it's a big concern to my eyes. It's not that it's been cleaned up, but as it does get cleaned up, it keeps coming back. So I believe that we don't, we should not have another liquor store within that area. There's already a block away, there's already two liquor stores over there by Jack in the Box. And that's my concern is towards homelessness. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And the last speaker I have is from Kathy Morris.
Mayor and council, thank you. As you know, I'm involved in various and sundry different things in this city, but I'm speaking for myself. The market is really a very nice market. It's clean, it's well-kept, and all that. However, I am speaking in opposition of them to have a license. There's plenty of places around, across the street, around the corner, pretty much within walking distance everywhere. I also feel that the facility that is a limited access. It's a small area, and I don't know how many times you've driven by there, but entrance and exit, people do really goofy things in that, in that little strip center. I don't think it's a good place to have a liquor license at all, particularly since there's several others that are very close. I have nothing against wine and spirits. Believe me, I don't. However, that's not the place to sell them. I am opposed to this. Thank you.
And that's all of the speaker sheets that I had for this item.
Okay. Any other speakers that didn't get a sheet in? Well, now's the chance. Seeing done. I'll close the public hearing. Discussion, motion. Talk about how you feel, what you want to do.
I'd like to make a comment.
Make a comment.
So I'm, I'm very familiar with this particular location. It's changed hands a lot of times over the years. It used to be a 7-Eleven. It's had multiple different ownerships there. I think the way that the store presents, it presents very clean. And my personal feeling is, I think that we're, especially the, the spirits that they listed is very specific to the Asian market and the, and the products that they sell. It's not, they're not selling Jack Daniels and all that other stuff. They're just selling the very specific types of wine and spirits. And I'm, I'm a, I certainly support this, I, this, this PCN. I think this is a reasonable thing, and I think we need to give this business a, a real shot at survival. And this is the way we stabilize our business marketplace there.
Kelsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I am also inclined to support this. It is a different circumstance than the last one that we heard. The, I actually would like to see the map again, if possible, Director Kempner. The types of licenses nearby are unlike the last circumstance as well. This one would support the sale of liquor, and specifically with the presentation of it being concentrated on Asian liquors, Asian beers, that seems to be an underserved market. So for those reasons, I'm inclined to support.
I actually look at this a little differently, and I really appreciate the fact that a letter was included in our packet for consideration. And I'm really concerned of the homeless situation that does quite occur very, I mean, right next to this location. And it there, it's an active homeless space. I don't know what else to call that. And I'm, I'm concerned that it would encourage more bad behavior. The other thing is, there are three different school properties very close to this location. And this, you know, I pass this place twice a day. And I would not want another liquor store, considering there are liquor stores immediately across the street or liquor available. While I agree, specific, and that's why I asked my question, I agree specific Asian liquors and offerings would be interesting and a great encouragement to this particular business. I don't know that I would like it at this particular location because of those reasons.
I think that the, I couldn't even pronounce some of the liquors that they plan to sell. And one time I was looking for a bottle of sake, and I didn't know where to go. So I, I now know where I could go, because I don't think the homeless are the issue. Or you would close Safe Bank, you know, because they hang out at Safe Bank, and it, people can't go to the ATM, you know, outside, because there's homeless everywhere. They're across the street, they're down, they're everywhere. So if we were to close businesses because, or deny businesses because of the homeless, that's just not gonna, I mean, that's just not. And, and what they sell is behind the counter. So I think it's, nobody can walk in there and steal it and run out the door like they used to do at Rite Aid. So I, I think this is a very responsible prop, sales, what do you call it, store owner. And I, the guy's been in business for a while, and I think that his, his place is clean. The police department is, sees no, I think the fact that they're on the corner makes them visible. It's, it's not the best shopping center in the world, because it's everybody else in there. And your donuts are there. Your donuts are in that shopping center. So I, I'd like to give the guy a shot, and I don't think that the licenses around him threaten him at all. And I think the other guy is down far enough that attracts a different traffic. So and I, even in Area 7, 8, 9, I mean, Round Table Pizza sells liquor, and this is off-site. So they take it home. It's not like they sit and drink and drive afterwards. So they take the stuff and go home with it. And I, I just think it's a reasonable request, and I think that there is a public necessity to have those weird beverages, you know, the kind of, that go with the weird food that they sell. So I think it's, I think it's reasonable. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. So do you want to make some, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, unless you want to.
No, I'll second.
Okay, all right.
So you're making the motion to approve?
I'm, I'm making a motion to move to approve the letter of public convenience and necessity to allow the issuance of a Type 21 license for the sale for beer, wine, and spirits to Rangoon Grocery at 7601 Sunrise Boulevard.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
No.
Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Yes. Motion passes.
Our next item is public hearing, item number 15. The subject is compliance with Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3, Regarding Vacancies, Recruitment, and Retention Efforts. And the recommendation is to receive and file the presentation for information purposes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. Susan Tellore here, Administrative Services Director. We are bringing you tonight, as discussed at the budget workshop, I have here with me our HR manager, Brody Lourde. We will be presenting on the AB 2561, which is the City of Citrus Heights vacancy and retention efforts.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. So the presentation, as Susan stated, is in response to AB 2561, which requires public agencies such as the city to hold at least one public hearing per year to discuss vacancies, recruitments, and retention efforts. So this presentation, along with the staff report, satisfies the city's legal obligations under the new law, which took effect January 1, 2025. So some basic information about our workforce. We have 210.75 budgeted positions in 2024, and that's across the city's six departments. We also have vacancy information here by month. And so what you can see here is a number of vacancies on the first of each month, and then the number of separations and new hires that occurred within that month, and position changes. And then the calculated vacancy rate as it relates to the number of vacancies compared to the number of budgeted positions. So earlier in the year, we were a little bit higher, at 15%, decreased throughout the year to a closing rate of 8.07 in December. As it relates to our three labor organizations or unrepresented staff, this is the average annual vacancy rate for those groups. So for our Police Officers Association, that annual rate was 10.8%, 5.9% for the Police Employees Association, and for unrepresented staff, that number was 8.6% for the year. In terms of our recruitment process, this is a very basic explanation of how our process works. The department submit a requisition that for, to fill a position. That requisition goes through an approval process, and the Human Resources Department opens a recruitment. We go through the process of screening applicants through a very, very varied means. And then we get to the interview process. A candidate is selected, and then they go through pre-employment steps, and then we have other start date. So that's kind of our general overview of our recruitment process. In terms of our efforts in terms with recruitment for 2024, we filled 41 vacancies in 2024. We had an average number of vacancies each month of 19, and an average vacancy rate throughout the year of 8.94. And the average number of days to fill vacancies across the city was 130 days. So that's from the day that we post the job to the day that someone is in the seat. 141 days for the police department, and 89 days for non-police, and that would be primarily due to the more extensive background process that those folks have to go to to work at the police department. And this is just some other basic statistics that we're required to present on for 2024. Our retention rate is 89.34%, which is a good metrics for us. On average, a retention rate of close to 90 is a, is a good retention rate. Closer to 80 is going to be seen as more of a poor retention rate. Our average turnover rate is 10.21%, and our average tenure of staff as of last year was 7.9 years. And so in terms of our recruitment and retention efforts, the potential obstacles, I think, that we saw at the beginning of 2024 were the length of the process for both pre-employment and background processes, and that our job postings were not necessarily applicant-friendly in terms of the length of the process, the look of the job postings, the language that we use, those sorts of things. So in terms of both continued solutions that we implemented in 2024, and then also continued solutions presently, we did work to eliminate unnecessary pre-employment screenings that led to delays in onboarding staff. We continue to rebrand and redesign the recruitment process to make it easier for candidates to apply. We strengthen employee engagement efforts and staff development efforts, and we We strengthen employee engagement efforts and staff development efforts. And we expanded candidate outreach to displaced federal workers by way of Civic Match, which is a free service to us to connect displaced federal workers with local government jobs. And then just to highlight some of the strength areas, I think it's really positive to see that vacancies declined nearly fifty percent in twenty-twenty-four, and that, like I mentioned earlier, that retention rate of eighty-nine-point-three-four is a positive indicator for the organization. Take any questions you have.
Questions?
I am curious about the displaced federal workers. Were we able to get any yet? I know it's all kind of just happening, but.
Yeah, it's a new, a new subscription, not subscription, a new process for us. It just actually came out at the federal level. So we are on there. We are posting our jobs, especially our hard-to-fill jobs, and we are reaching out. The cool part about the service is we can connect directly with displaced federal workers. So we can kind of say to them, hey, you know, their contact information is there. We can reach out them to, and encourage them to apply for jobs. So we've been mining those candidates, but we haven't quite found a match just yet. But I think it's one, it's a great resource for us, and it doesn't cost us anything.
That's very cool.
For vacancies, what are the categories of vacancies, or what departments?
In terms of the vacancies that were, the stats that were presented in that slide, it's an, well, it's an overall count. So I don't have specific numbers by job. The, the AB twenty-five sixty-one only requires us to do that if we have a specific problem areas that are a vacancy rate of more than twenty percent. So none of our jobs have the, none of our bargaining units have a vacancy rate of more than twenty percent. So I don't have the specific vacancies by, by job class.
Okay. That's good to know the threshold, though.
Yes.
Yeah, it's twenty percent. So that, that slide you had about retention, turnover, and tenure. If you were to separate the police department from the rest of the non-police department, or even, I gotta believe that that police department skews the numbers up, and that actually the regular, I don't know what you call them, the regular, unrepresented employees have a lower vacancy rate.
Well, so the vacancy rate was, was broken out between police officers, police employees, and unrepresented. So our Police Officers Association, which is our police officers and our sergeants, did have, on average, the highest vacancies in twenty-twenty-four.
But then we, we had retention, turnover, and tenure. And I, I just was wondering how those numbers change between police and not police.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I think if you look at the vacancy number, you can probably extrapolate that the retention and tenure numbers might also follow that path. But we can certainly get that information for you if you're curious.
I'm really proud that our city has such high retention. And I really believe it's more than eighty-nine percent if you look at the non-police side. So it's like, because police is always moving up, you know, going across laterally. And, and so you expect police to move around. But I don't think, I, I really think our staff just enjoys the workplace, and our policies, and our, and our culture that we have here, that I don't think we have turnover, and we have higher tenure average. I gotta, I mean, we've had people, Regina's been here for a lifetime. Mary Poole's been here a lifetime. So I believe tenure is higher than seven years. So.
We, we miss Rachel.
I know we miss Rachel. Rachel did leave. That's good.
No offense.
But we got new people. So anyways, I just think that, that we look at this number, and I, you know, I don't know the reasoning behind this bill that made us do this. Because, and I will say that if you are looking for vacancies in, in the Sua District, our highest vacancy was actually just under twenty percent, and that, due to the fact that we cannot find engineers. And it's the same thing here. And so there's just a real shortage of engineers out there. So get those kids to engineering school, and they got a job waiting for them. So, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, there is no formal action on this item, but it is a public hearing. So we just wanted to.
Oh, should I open the public hearing, take testimony? Okay. Public hearing is open. If anybody wants to comment. Nope. Public hearing is closed. We have received and filed. Thank you so much.
The next item is Department Reports, number sixteen. The subject is Neighborhood Cleanup Update by the General Services Department.
There she is, our tenured employee. Oh, I thought you'd bring us a truck. Thank you. That's true. We have a gift on it, too. Yeah, it is.
Good evening, Mayor Karpinski Costa, members of the council, Mary Poole with the General Services Department. And I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on the Neighborhood Cleanup Program. And Megan was kind enough to just bring some show and tell items. Those are going to be in the presentation, but I thought it'd be good for you to see them in person. So go through this presentation. This is a update of the program coming from the November action that was taken by the City Council to amend our contract with Republic Services to start enforcing the forty-eight-hour set-out rule. And I'll talk about that more as I go through the presentation, which is brief. I'm going to just go touch on the history of the Neighborhood Cleanup Program, go over the challenges that brought us to where we are today, and the changes that we've made to address those challenges, and then really talk about the forty-eight-hour enforcement implementation and what we've done since it started. Then opportunity for next steps and any questions. So as many of you know, the Neighborhood Cleanup Program, which is our bulky item program that we have available to residents to set out materials three times per year on a set schedule, was originally started as an on-call appointment-based program. It was converted to three times per year shortly after it began, to find out that the set schedule was really a more efficient and effective way to deliver the services. From two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-four, even though the, the door hanger advised, do not set your materials out more than two days before your pickup date, we did not enforce that rule. So there was no enforcement. Residents were still advised to set the materials out, but any penalties associated with putting the material out early were not enforced. And this really was intended to allow people to have an opportunity to put materials out over the weekend. So it was, it was something that was intentionally established. However, that led to a number of program challenges that have just built and become more and more invasive and comprehensive over the years. So blight being the main one that really triggered us looking at this, the program earlier this year. Illegal dumping is rampant. Scavenging is a pro and a con. So some scavengers are, are very neat, and they take materials and it's recycling. Other scavengers leave a big mess and just move the materials somewhere else. We end up picking it up anyway. Other items that really were just important, but didn't drive the change that we, we made in twenty-twenty-five, but just the impact from holidays and gatherings, people not being able to park because of materials being out on the street for up to seven days at a time, trying to coordinate our street sweeping schedule or our construction schedules, and then weather. Weather would impact if we had a big weather event, and we have a bunch of materials out, that the materials could really become hazards out in the roadway. So all of that led to a, a City Council strategic objective back in April of twenty-twenty-four, which advised or directed staff to come back with recommendations for modifications, which we did. I just want to show a couple of examples of the kinds of things that brought us to these recommended changes. So some oversized pile, early set out on arterial, certainly blocking the bikeway. Illegal dumping, this is way more than the ten cubic yards that's even allowed. The ten cubic yards is essentially the back of a pickup truck to the, to the top of a cab. So as you can see, these people are a little overzealous, and definitely illegally dumping. More examples of oversized piles, illegal materials. We do not accept tree trunks in the Neighborhood Cleanup Program. Those materials need to go to the transport station. This is an oversized pile on San Juan where our fantastic supervisor, Josh Latus, actually caught the, the landscaper dumping on an already oversized pile on San Juan. So because of his proactive work, we're able to identify this dumper and work with the police department to essentially do a, a letter and talk, if you will. This is a example of just where illegal dumping tends to concentrate when we have our Neighborhood Cleanup Programs. And it is a little higher in the areas where we're doing cleanup. This was a, our summer cycle. So we had a whole, a Quality of Life, with staff got together, came up with some ideas, worked with Republic Services, what could we do? How could we make this better? Presented those recommendations to the Quality of Life Committee in August. Concerns about ongoing blight were just really top of mind. And options discussed include shifting to an on-call appointment-based program like we originally had, like the, as is done in many other jurisdictions around us, or, and/or reducing time out for collection. So the recommendation from the committee was to do a flash vote. So a flash vote was conducted, and we got some really strong results, with ninety percent of respondents saying that they did use the service, most of whom viewed scavenging as a benefit, most of whom knew about the recycling, the Neighborhood Cleanup Program through their door hanger, most of whom loved the program and were worried, but because of the flash vote that we were looking at potentially terminating it. So many of them provided recommendations for improvement, the bulk of which were to enforce the, the forty-eight-hour set-out rule. So those modifications came, were developed, and the determination was to enforce the existing program guidelines, which, which state not to set out the materials more than forty-eight hours before collection, and then also to, excuse me, to include penalties for early set-out, which would be added to the bill. We worked to amend the existing agreement to work with Republic to do that outreach, education, and the penalty issuance. And we also included options for the contract manager or the General Services Director to approve customized requirements in certain areas. For example, on the arterials, it may be that we need to have only twenty-four hours for set out there. We haven't implemented that, but we could do that with this new structure. Also, in HOAs or high-density areas, maybe it's better to have a dumpster out for a week and allow residents to bring the materials there versus having it out in these narrow roadways or alleyways. So those are some of the things that we can do with this flexibility. So the council approved updating the program guidelines in August of twenty-twenty-four and approved the amendment with Republic Services in November. We started implementation in January, and we've been going full steam ahead ever since. So the new program is that, the new old program, is that the door hanger, you still get it seven days in advance. It's very clear, as you can see on the door hanger in front of you, that the materials must be set out no more than forty-eight hours, and that they can be subject to a significant penalty. It's a hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents if you were assessed that penalty. Customers who have walkout service are able to call in and ask for some extra time if they need it. And other customers, if they find themselves in a situation where they need extra time, they're welcome to call the city or Republic Services, and we can make arrangements for them. So the education and outreach that we have been doing with my team over here at Republic Services, Ray, Megan, and Anna, as well as Colin, helping us out and giving us support. The twenty-twenty-five customer calendar guide was all about the Neighborhood Cleanup Program. On practically every page, there was a tip, or a suggestion, or an inference about make sure that you're mindful of these new requirements. Megan, Ray, and, and Anna, and I have all been making the rounds to the neighborhood meetings. It's been offered to all of them, taken up by most of them, and the offer continues. Josh Latus, the route supervisor, and Megan have been out doing the proactive route audits, courtesy notices, and knock and talks, updated door hangers. We did postcard mailers. One was sent out in January, February. We have another one pending. The direct mailer that's going out, and I think you have that in front of you, the tri-fold, it's a program guide, that's going out in cycles in advance of the, of each month. So if your month is coming up, you should be getting your program guide and your door tag. The neighborhood cleanup dates are now posted on the city website. So they're really handy. And when people call in, I, I can just go look it up very simply, and I tell them how I'm doing it as I'm helping them. And the same with our team that does customer service. There's also been several social media posts. Those will continue. Information in city newsletter letters, at events, activities, and there's been some local newspaper coverage. So the next few slides are just going to be some examples of how that outreach looks in person. So this is the customer service guide with a couple of samples, February, March, and April on the left. And then February is our customer service guide for neighborhood cleanups. The neighborhood meetings, I mentioned that. The proactive route audits. So Republic Services staff are going out and checking to see if piles were out in advance of that two-day rule, doing knock and talks. And one of the things that Megan and her team have found is that when they were talking to people, several people felt like maybe they would need more time. When, and Megan and Josh, whoever was talking to them, would let them know, just give us a call if you need more time. So far, no one, not one single call has come in to ask for more time. So, but the offer remains. This is an example of the early set-out notice. So as you can see on the left, what we've been doing over the past quarter, from February through April, was just the educational and the penalty waived notice. So when an actual fine might be assessed, then they'll have the second box checked. This is the.
Do you put this on the notice at the time of the pickup? So they, they pick it up, and then they leave this?
Correct. Correct. And they're leaving that actually on the door. So it's not left on the pile. It's left on the door. And at this point, they're really doing proactive work and knocking on the door, trying to make contact with the person, or their neighbors. So oftentimes, when you've got people out there, the neighbors are also interested in what's going on. This is a sample of the postcard, which was delivered a, a month prior to collection. And we kind of did this as a test, just to see if we delivered a postcard, would that actually trigger people to start putting their piles out? And we're very proud that it didn't. So we have this available as another tool in our outreach toolbox. This is the direct mailer that we talked about, and you have in front of you. It also allows residents to keep it and put their Neighborhood Cleanup Month, or now they can look up their actual date. What we do do on the date, which here it is, is we have a nice bold writing, don't set piles out more than forty-eight hours before the door hanger, and that, the dates may shift. So you need to really look at the date on your door hanger as your guiding light about when to set the material out. We also have been doing outreach through our city newsletters that Marissa has kindly helped us put together. So the Citrus Heights Cares is all part of this. It's a, and definitely an underpinning of this program. And so we did some reminders about that. And then also in the You Ask, We Answer section of our newsletter, and also in our chatbot, if we get questions about the Neighborhood Cleanup, it's directed now to our website page. And then in the center, we have Marissa, Megan, and Ray, who were sponsors of our Tools of the Trade event, and we're out there giving additional information at this event and other events throughout the city. So that's a summary of our outreach and education. It continues. The penalties did begin in May, but to date, no penalties have been issued. As I mentioned, residents with walkout service are encouraged to call Republic and just ask for that extra time. They will be given it. Anyone else who has trouble, we will be happy to work with them. And then we are going into procurement season in the fall for the residential services, and we can look at some additional changes then as we go through this, these implementations. And that's the conclusion of the update, and happy to answer any questions. And Anna and her team are also here to answer any questions.
Questions? So this takes care of setting it out early. How about, what, what do you do about the pile too big? Same notice?
There, yes. It's a extra, your pile is too big. So if your pile is too big, you get a notice that says this is too large.
It's a notice of improper large collection.
Yes. And you have an opportunity to dial it back in, and they'll come back and pick up the ten yards. Or you can pay, there's an additional fee that you might want to, and it might be reasonable that it works for you to pay that extra and just have the whole thing picked up. So you have, you have options. But it will be posted with the violation.
Excellent, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, nice presentation, Mary. Appreciate that. So how do we address somebody who's a victim of illegal? So how do we address somebody who's a victim of illegal dumping when they've made, somebody's come in and dumped and made their pile larger than it was initially planned?
So we do get that, and people, people feel pretty confident and comfortable about calling us and letting us know that someone has dumped an illegal pile in front of their home. And we can also go out there and Josh's team and Armando, our general services team, they're pretty good about knowing whether or not that pile actually originated from the property, or it is an illegal dump. If your tree looks like it's been freshly trimmed and all this material is out, we might be asking some additional questions. But overall, if it's been illegally dumped, we're not going to assess that customer.
Great. Thank you.
What does Republic do with all this stuff? Do they, do they sort it, the stuff that can be recycled and?
All the Neighborhood Cleanup items goes on a sort line at? Sierra Waste. So it's all going across the line, and the good stuff's getting picked out and moved into marketable piles or containers. And then what has to go in the landfill goes into the landfill.
If it's metal, they get, Republic gets, they recycle it and get paid the metal price?
Right. Everything that can be recycled is retrieved from the, from the waste stream.
Great. Any other questions? Mary, as usual, terrific presentation.
Thank you.
We look forward to the, to the fall when we review this stuff.
Our next item is city manager items.
Hey, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Ash feeding your city manager with a few updates for you. One, we've had a great outpouring of interest on the Habitat for Humanity homes that are on San Aragut Drive that the City Council has made available in a partnership with Habitat for Humanity, as well as other community partners that have brought funding to the project. And we're gonna have a groundbreaking that's gonna be occurring. So that's very exciting. There's been a lot of talk about this over the course of a number of years. And now, on Monday, June 2nd, at 9:00 a.m., there'll be a celebratory groundbreaking. Certainly looking forward to seeing Mayor, members of the council at that groundbreaking. Definitely a great day to celebrate. We'll see the foundation of that community.
Have they picked the people to move in already?
They're in the process of that right now, so.
Will they be there? Some of the people be there?
You know, I don't know. But that'll be a good, good question. We're gonna, we're gonna find out on Monday, for sure. But I know they're planning a great event. Also, we have a couple of community meetings starting to be held by our elected officials. We have two the same night at the same time that are occurring. So one, Congressman Bera is a town hall that he is organizing at 6:00 p.m. The location's gonna be announced in the coming days, but if you want to register to attend the town hall, you can do so at bera.house.gov/townhall. And that's available on his social media channels as well. At that same time here at the community chambers, there's gonna be a, or the council chambers, I should say, Supervisor Rodriguez is gonna hold an event at 6:00 p.m. So more to come on the Congressman Bera location, Supervisor Rodriguez here at the council chamber. City Scoop. So excited about these. These are always a big hit with the community. June 4th at San Juan High School, June 16th at Van Maron Park, August 20th at Mesa Verde High School. And these were locations that were selected by the community. And each event starts at 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Free ice cream, city info, neighborhood connection. This is a Citrus Heights thing, you know? I don't think there's very many communities that are doing events like this. It's very cool, very heartwarming, and I know it's a favorite of the councils, so look forward to seeing folks.
And these start at 6:00?
6:30. 6:30. So, you know, it'll be a little hotter at this time of year, so nice to let it get a little cooler and cool it down with an ice cream, too. So a great way to connect with neighborhoods and get information about what your city is doing. Sunrise Palm Trees. This is something that Director Cave's been working with smud on. They have to do a major transformer replacement at their substation on Sunrise. This is just south of San Aragut. So it will require removal of eight palm trees that are in that median. They've looked at a lot of different alternatives in order to get this done, and this is a project that really needs to happen for them. And this median work will start this summer. It will also help with, you know, some turning movements to serve an existing community that is located off, just off Sunrise as well, that his voice and past concerns about connectivity into their neighborhood. So there is tree mitigation.
They're gonna replace the, they're gonna replace that median?
They will absolutely have to button that up, re-landscape it. They're not putting palm trees back in, per se.
Good.
Because they're gonna need that, but it'll be a turn pocket that's gonna be paid for by them that will help serve an existing condition that we'd like to see changed. And so they'll button everything back up. They also will be paying tree mitigation fees for those palm trees.
I've got a question for you, Ash. So how, how big of a piece of equipment is this? Is this enormous, or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very.
Is it gonna cause a destruction of traffic? Are they gonna close Sunrise, or what's the?
Terrify road?
We, we are definitely gonna make sure that the proper traffic control's in place, but it's a, in order to have to remove these trees, it's definitely a big transformer piece of equipment. And so they're gonna be doing the project this winter, so they're looking to kinda do that demo and this work this, you know, the summer in advance of the project. But it'll be very well coordinated with our general services department. And I know there's been a lot of discussions with Director Cave and our city engineer, Bloom.
And no saving the palm trees. I've seen the big things that go in and pull the whole ball, root ball out and all that, but.
Yeah, they're, that, I've seen that, too, and that's pretty impressive with the burlap sacks. This median is a little narrow. We might hear about it from some of our residents on the commute pattern if we were trying to open that road up.
Get hit by a frond, you know, on a windy day.
Yeah, but that's a good question and good thought, just unfortunately, the conditions of this location aren't really conducive to re-low. Sunrise resurfacing. Director Cave's, I mean, she's been giving some council updates on this. This is a very exciting project. She was actually, took these pictures last night, and this is really kind of a testament to her commitment to this project. It's something that she took on to really advance council's priorities around the pavement preservation plan. Worked on the design with the consultants, the bids, and made sure that this happened for the community in conjunction with her team, but really has kinda spearheaded this effort. So that pavement resurfacing began last night. She was out there to ensure that the quality control standards were being met. Had a great overview for our executive team this morning on it. Was again out there at 5:00 a.m. this morning, so she's gotta be tired by now. And I know she intends to go by there again tonight to make sure some of her recommendations are being adhered to. So this will continue through Saturday morning with multi-lane traffic control, and the evening operations will focus on the northbound lanes. But again, this is a couple-of-month project. Very exciting to see it get going, and I appreciate her and the team's efforts on making sure it's very well executed. This was spoken to by Vice Mayor Lopez Taft. Amy Van, our city clerk, was invited to accept a Most Valued Partner Award on May 21st, where the San Juan Unified School District recognized the city of Citrus Heights as one of their most valued partners. And city clerk Vans worked with the district on seeing how she can collaborate with them to execute your goals and priorities around, you know, bettering that relationship, but also making sure that our schools are improved and there's better connection between city government and the district. So that resulted in recognition with that, with an award. So well done, well done. Accepted that on behalf of the entire city. And then we also, speaking of awards, we had our human resources manager, Brody Lourda, do a presentation here earlier tonight, and she's been a fantastic team member that's been added to our staff. Lot of great reviews across our organization about her work. And she has been recognized by the engaging local government, she's been recognized as a 2025 Engaging Local Government Leaders Top Influencer in Local Government. So there's, you know, she has over 20 years of public sector leadership, definitely a champion of the servant leader in innovation. I know I definitely appreciate her perspectives that she brings to our team meetings when we're talking about human resources issues. She anticipates the challenges, definitely delivers on solutions, loves the culture of mentorship growth and collaborating amongst team members. And then this Engaging Local Government Leaders, ELGL is the acronym. And she, one of the things they look at when they look at these top influencers is, are you embodying the values of that organization, which are joy, creativity, connection, dependability, and equity? And she certainly has been demonstrating that here as part of our organization. So just wanted to recognize her for receiving that recognition. So lots of recognitions tonight, which is great. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. And the next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
I have one. Anybody else? I have one. I'd like to reopen annexing that teeny corner on Ferox Boulevard in Madison that just, when you look at the city map, it's just, and it has Fabian's Restaurant in it. And just that, you know, what's funny is that it's like two parcels that are not in our city.
I second.
He seconds it. So can we do something and further proceed with that?
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we, I already have an idea of what that process can look like, and certainly we'll come back to the council with a future report on that, working with Director Kemp.
I think the numbers we got before, we need to revisit.
Certainly, that area was one of the ones that, and especially given some of the pavement restoration plans that we have for that particular area, I think that those numbers would be of a benefit to the city and would be an area that would be kind of a nice boundary cleanup. So we'll look at exploring that opportunity and come back to the council with a report.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. There's nothing else?
Next is just our closed session item.
Oh, okay. So we're going to adjourn to closed session, and I'll be back to report out of closed session. Husband, you'll have to just wait.